We're a little past 5:30, so we're going to go ahead and start the proclamations, and then we'll start the City Council Business Meeting at 6:00 PM. So if you, who's here to receive the proclamation for prostate cancer awareness? We've changed up our format a little, so if you guys will come up here in front of the dais and face about, and face the audience, and the city manager will read the proclamation. It will take a few minutes, and then you can say a few words to the audience. Come on up here against the rail, face that way. You're good.
We will not harm you.
There you go, you're good. All right, city manager?
Proclamation, Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer among men and the second leading cause of cancer-related deaths, and whereas in 2025, an estimated 313,780 men in the United States will be diagnosed with prostate cancer, and nearly 35,770 will lose their lives to the disease. That is one man every 15 minutes. And whereas, one in eight men will face a prostate cancer diagnosis in their lifetime, and African-American men are at an even greater risk with a rate of one in six. Alarmingly, African-American men are more than twice as likely to die from the disease. And whereas, education, awareness, and early detection through regular screenings and powerful tools that save lives, protect families, and strengthen our community, and whereas prostate cancer does not discriminate, all men are at risk, making it essential for every citizen to understand the importance of prevention and early action. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that September 2025 be officially designated as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and call upon all citizens, government agencies, businesses, and organizations in Palm Coast to join together in raising awareness, promoting education, and supporting the fight to end prostate cancer. Signed, the second day of September 2025, attest Kaylee Cook, city clerk, and city of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor Michael Norris.
Close it in, we'll get a picture with everyone.
The podium is yours, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you for this opportunity. As a representative at Advent Health, we are thrilled to be a part of this proclamation. As a male nurse myself, I know firsthand what men's health means, and it's not just for men. So I would love to encourage you guys and encourage our community to promote men's health, promote prostate awareness. For the ladies in the room, the men in your life that you care about so much, let's break the stigma around men's health and the waiting games. We know the impact that can have. One of the statistics that was not read, even though we heard many, is the survival rate of prostate cancer after five years is 97%. It is a beatable disease, and so we're very proud to continue to serve our community through Palm Coast and Palm Coast Parkway and other facilities to be able to continue to promote that. We're going to take it one step further, and in November, we're going to challenge the men in our community to go no shave November for men's health awareness. So we'll start off with a clean-shaven face and encourage you to grow a beard and bring awareness to why you're doing that and what that means. So we hope you will take part of that, and we'll engage other community teams to join us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to thank Advent Health for being here today to help promote September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. You know, the numbers you heard, the one in eight will be diagnosed sometime in their lifetime, and the roughly 36,000 are, you know, stunning numbers. They're very similar to breast cancer. Most people don't know that, because you don't hear a lot about prostate cancer, not many people talk about it. And a year ago, you know, American Cancer Society started a campaign called Know Your Score. And, you know, that was to get men out there to understand what PSA is, which is a blood test to detect, you know, the prostate cancer early. You know, like they said, the five-year survival rate is very high, but it's the early detection that counts. So, you know, knowing what that is will help you set your path moving forward, you know, and, you know, you do hear something, you know, many things out there. You know, I've talked to lots of people with prostate cancer, you know, what they go through, what they hear, and one thing you hear is, you know, oh, it affects most people once you're over 65, or prostate cancer is a slow-growing cancer, it's a good cancer, you know, it's many men die with prostate cancer, not from it. You know, I heard one gentleman tell me that he went to the doctor and he said, "No, I don't want you to screen for your PSA, because there's over-treatment," and people once they know they have prostate cancer, because you can live with prostate cancer, it's the monitoring that matters, that you can watch and wait. You know, some people get very concerned knowing they have prostate cancer, but lots of men out there have prostate cancer, live with it, but their early detection is critical, because once the prostate cancer leaves the prostate, your dying percentage, that 97% goes way down once it gets outside the prostate. So that early detection is critical. So for people with men in your life, you know, have them get screened early. If you've got some of those high-risk factors, you know, start at 40, if you don't, 45. Annual checkup, see if you feel healthy. Prostate cancer can have no signs. You can have prostate cancer and not know it. So that annual physical, annual checkup with PSA, Know Your Score, you know, that's some message to get out there, Know Your Score. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Is it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are we going to move on to the second proclamation, National Recovery Month? Is there someone here to receive the proclamation? Come up here, stand with us, and we'll read through it, and then you can have the microphone, okay?
Proclamation, National Recovery Month. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of problem, and guide those in needs of appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas, to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the Oxford House Network in Florida invite all residents of Palm Coast to participate in National Recovery Month. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of city of Palm Coast, Florida, that the month of September 2025 be officially designated as National Recovery Month. Signed, the second day of September 2025, attest Kaylee Cook, city clerk, and city of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor Michael Norris.
You can have the dais, if you'd like to say a few words.
Sure, I would, thank you.
I'm sorry, the podium, not dais, I'm sorry.
I knew what you meant.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, good evening. My name is Desiree Rio. I am the outreach worker here in Palm Coast for Oxford House, but I am also a person in long-term recovery. What that means for me is that I haven't found it necessary to use any mood or mind-altering substances since October 15th of 2020. On behalf of Oxford House, I do want to thank the city of Palm Coast for recognizing National Recovery Month and for issuing this proclamation. This moment is not only an acknowledgement of the struggles many of us have faced, but also a celebration of the hope, strength, and the resilience that comes with recovery. Recovery is not easy, with children especially. It takes daily commitment, accountability, and support. For many of us, Oxford House has been that safe place where we have learned how to rebuild our lives, to live responsibly, and to lean on one another as a family. It has given us second chances, and in some cases, third or fourth chances, but most importantly, it has given us the opportunity to discover who we truly are without drugs or alcohol. Today, this proclamation tells our community that recovery is possible. It tells the person still struggling that they're not alone, and that there are people and resources ready to walk with them on their journey. I want to thank the leaders of Palm Coast for standing with us, for helping us break that stigma, and for sending a clear message that recovery deserves to be seen, heard, and celebrated. To my fellow brothers and sisters in recovery, this proclamation is also a reminder that what we do matters. Every day, we choose to stay clean and sober, and not only change our lives, but also change our families, our communities, and our future. So thank you for believing in recovery, and thank you for believing in us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the two proclamations we have for tonight. We're going to travel in the City Council Business Meeting at 6:00 PM.
Today is Tuesday, September 2, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. We're in the John Nett's Community Wing of City Hall. If you could please silence all your devices, I'm calling this meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a short moment of silence.
.................. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. If you could, Ms. Cook, please call to roll.
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Gumboro. I do believe he's appearing virtually.
Can you guys hear me? Okay, we got him. All right, we'll begin with public participation. I remind everyone to read the rules printed inside the agenda. We've slotted 30 minutes for the opening public participation. Please, if the item is on the agenda, refrain from it. You will have time to speak between any after any item that we present. And with that, we'll start public comment. Yes, sir, Mr. Martin.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here as a member of the Charter Review Committee because I'm concerned about the scheduling of the meetings, and I'm concerned that we're not going to have enough time to do our due diligence and present you with the best report. The consultant had suggested not starting the committee's business meeting till January. I think that's way too late. I think we need to do this as quickly as possible. If we can finish early, that's fine, but I don't want to run up against that hard March 31st deadline to present you with a report and not be able to give due deliberation to the the later articles in the charter. I want to make sure that everybody on the committee has a chance to speak their opinion. I want to make sure that we listen to the public and we, you know, we take their ideas and include it in our discussions and so we can give you the best report. So I'm just going to ask you if you could please try to speed up the schedule so that we can start meeting this month instead of waiting for the community meetings in October and December. Because I really, I really think we need to start the business meetings before the end of this year. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person for public comment. Rock, paper, and scissors to see who goes. Yes, sir.
Hi, Jake Scully, 123 Forrester Place. Longtime listener, first time caller. Anyway, I just want to frame this with my perspective. I was on the on the planning board for six years, and I'd often bore my family and friends with, you know, the good, the bad, the ugly on the planning board. And the good was working with the city staff and learning more about, you know, the city and how it works, and occasionally working with the city attorney as well. The bad was knowing oftentimes when we review the packet, that I was likely going to have to make a vote that was probably unpopular with the people attending for public comment and such. I think you guys probably feel that pain much more than I did at the time. Family and friends, I'd say, listen, I think sometimes people are looking at the wrong end of the horse, okay? What they should be doing is working with the city, approaching the council well in advance of that to try to affect change to the LDC or or the development requirements if that's what they really wanted. Because showing up at the last bit was not going to change it. It wasn't going to change any of the evidence. The developers and the representatives know what boxes to check, and the planning department was terrific at putting together this supporting document. You know, so what what I came here to talk about, though, is the SB 180, which, as you guys, I'm sure, know, is a really comprehensive legislation piece addressing a number of emergency issues. A lot of them make great sense, streamlining persons, FDM operational and transparency measures, and all that looked great. However, on the last day of the legislative session, which restricts local government from adopting more restrictive or burdensome development requirements. Also, that was retroactive based on the storms that they applied to August of last year and will continue through October 2027. It was written with an application of 100-mile radius from three storms, Debbie, Milton, and whatever. Anyway, the the effect of that 100-mile radius made this applicable to the entire state. Okay, so there's obviously issues there. So I think the HBA intent to file is a direct result of this. I think you would agree. And then there's another great part. Anyone can make a claim against us, against the governing authority that should have authority to manage development issues. So if the amendment remains in place, the right end of the horse, in my analogy, is dead. You can call the horse by a different name, Home Rule, but you, the council, will not be able to deal with that. Sorry I went late and did not get to.
No worries. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Duarte.
Jeanne Duarte, please explain why residents on the east side of the inlet don't place don't pay stormwater fees while those of us on the west side with the same drainage do. Our founding fathers knew what they were doing when they wrote the original charter for times like these. The charter is not due to be reviewed till 2028, but you insist on doing it early. We currently have two appointees on the dais and an exiting city council member, all of whom appointed charter review committee members. The citizens of Palm Coast don't need aggressive changes imposed on us by you or that committee, especially after what we experienced last year with the on the ballot for vote to that imposed proposed to remove provision 3E. The previous council approved a wastewater reclamation system at wastewater treatment plant two to put in use by 2030 without full disclosure or referendum to the residents of Palm Coast to turn brackish mixed with reclaimed wastewater into potable drinking water. This system already is built and already expanded and has been in test mode operation since May of 2025, all while wastewater treatment plant one continues to fail, has not been expanded, and is being used as a dumping ground for the waste collected and trucked in from wastewater treatment plant two and water treatment plant three. Raising impact fees to pay for these mistakes both hurt residents and developers. These fees get passed on to the consumers and add to the reason why housing will remain unaffordable. The solution is budget cuts in all departments. Get infrastructure accountability in exchange for that road fund, the loop road funds. No staff raises, no million-dollar door replacements, no fleet expansions, no surveillance cameras, no $5,000 porch additions to the city hall that you claim you needed because of water intrusion. Well, that's what warranties and insurance is for. Hire some staff for the library we didn't know is already built. Get wastewater treatment plant one up to par. Ensure growth pays for growth, cut wasteful spending, and start holding permits and planning departments accountable for the flooding issues in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Chantal Pruninger. I'll make it short. Last week, I could hear only a portion of what you said. Could you make sure that you are in the range of your microphone so we can hear better? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Carroll.
Carol Stoughton, Palm Coast. First, I want to say thank you to the city for Robert Sims. I recently had an air conditioner installed, and after the inspection, I found out it failed. Well, thankfully, Mr. Sims did give me the inspection, and because of a circuit breaker and an outside use which wasn't covered, I have a current approved air conditioner. So Robert Sims is to be commended. He is a fantastic individual. And also, I see that we used to have a law firm that was getting $500,000 for a total year expense, and now we're up to $700,000. I think we should go out and get sealed bids, sealed bids, not friends of friends, to come in and give the city a price, to have a new bunch of city attorneys in here. And also, while we're looking at different things that could go wrong, I think that people who run for council and hold office, we should have a report of their financial disclosure. And I'm namely aiming at Mr. Gumboro, who does not pay property taxes on the home he lives in, and also has bought two homes within three months to six months after he was elected to the tune of $435,000 and $330,000, roughly. So I think there should be investigation before a person takes office that they would submit to financial disclosures. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Mindy.
Mindy Melendez, I am coming with, the Florida statute recognizes the importance of keeping impact fees reasonable and directly related to the need in new infrastructure. Since these fees are rising, it's affecting the cost of building affordable housing. Have you guys considered applying the statutory provisions to allow adjustments, reductions, or exemption to help our Affordable Housing Committee with some of these initiatives? What are the steps being taken to ensure impact fees are not creating unnecessary barriers for the affordability? And we would like to invite any of you guys to come to our meetings to help look at the affordable housing and talk to with us and go over things before certain fees are added so that we can all be working together for their affordable housing in Palm Coast or in Flagler County. We'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Jeremy Davis. It is September 2025. I have been raising these issues since August 2023. For more than two years, I've stood here asking the same question. Why does my home flood every time it rains? The answer is simple. The city approved an elevated build at 62 Parady Lane without a downstream capacity analyst. You stamped the permit, you signed off, and you ignored the consequences. And now the water has one place to go, straight into my home. That's not my opinion. That's physics. Water flows downhill, and it flows into me, into my neighbors, and even into the yard of the 102-year-old resident who is now suffering damage because of your negligence. Now, I know that you will say that my home flooded before, and yes, in 2012 it did, but that was caused by a collapsed city on Corvett on Persimmon Drive. The city repaired it, and for over a decade, my property stayed dry. The flooding only returned after you approved elevation at 62 Parady without verifying the system could handle it. That is on you. And before you try to spin this back on me, I have provided surveys taken both before and after 62 Parady was elevated. They prove I was never shedding water onto my neighbors. So what is the city's excuse now? Instead of fixing the system, you sent 11 workers and a sheriff's deputy in my home to remove a single PVC pipe, 11 workers and a deputy for one pipe, and through my FOIA request, I had the city's own supervisor admitting in writing that the job wouldn't take long. So why the big workforce? Why the deputy? The emails go silent on that. Was it about drainage, or was it about intimidation? And after that stunt, you turned around and cited my 102-year-old neighbor. That isn't governance. That is harassment. I am tired of your broken system, tired of the excuses, tired of the delays, tired of watching families and elderly neighbors pay the price for your negligence. This city was quick to raise council salaries 151%, but when it comes to protecting residents from flooding, suddenly there's no urgency. My family has lost the use of our property because you refuse to enforce your own ordinances. That is a taking. That is negligence. I am not going away. I'm not backing down. And if you think residents like me will stop demanding answers, you are wrong. Every flooded home, every destroyed driveway, every wasted dollar of manpower, it all traces back to your failures right here at this dais. Do your jobs, fix the system, stop hiding behind excuses. Palm Coast residents deserve better, and history will remember whether you stood with the people or turned your back on us. Thank you. Two years, countless floods, surveys that proved the truth, and still no action. The only thing drowning in this city is accountability.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any final comments? Any follow-up, city manager?
Yes, thank you, mayor. In regards to the Charter Review Committee timeline, I spoke to Ms. Cook. She's our project manager for that, and it's our understanding that the consultant is going to go out and get data from the community meetings, so hearing firsthand from our residents about what they would like to see changed in the charter, and then brings that back to the committee so that the committee could form what needs to be changed in the charter. Is that correct, Ms. Cook?
Yes, that's correct.
And Ms. Cook is also working closely with our Parks and Rec staff to schedule those community input meetings for the charter as early as starting this month. So that's why kind of the change in schedule, if you will. Are there any questions regarding the Charter Review Committee?
You have anything, Pastor?
I don't really have any. Well, I guess it is a question. So what was the change that was made?
I don't think there was necessarily a change. It was just elaborated more upon that's what the process is going to be according to the consultant, and the way that she's done this before in several other cities, gave examples, and it's the process that she finds the most impactful.
So I think that what you described as far as Ms. Cook running the project can happen simultaneously with our appointed members that we as council, who are elected, decided would be best to make these decisions for our city, meet and talk about the changes they would like to propose. And then perhaps those can be collated. So whatever the consultant and Ms. Cook kind of gather from community input in conjunction with what the appointed members have already vocalized, I'm with Mr. Martin. I don't think starting this process, as far as the business meetings go, in January is going to be sufficient. You know, I think our charter is, there's issues. There's a lot of issues. So I know that the folks that have been appointed, specifically Mr. Martin, have already done a lot of work. They've already researched a lot of comparable cities and other city charters. I would like to give them the opportunity to meet more often. I mean, it doesn't mean they have to make any decisions, but at least to start that process. So I would ask for consensus from this board to have them start meeting in October, and hopefully, they can get two meetings knocked out by the end of the year while research is being gathered from the community simultaneously.
Would that be in the scope of the consultant? Would she be able to do that?
Yes, she would be able to do that.
Okay. I think Mr. O'Brien is the chair, right?
Yep.
I think they need to work it out and lean forward as much as possible. Ms. Cook, if you could work with them. I have no problem with consent on what you.
I just feel that I'm hoping that at the end, we'll have a product that we can handle, you know, at the board. In other words, we still have to look at the product. It sounds like it's going to be hard for them to come up with a true finished product that's ready for review unless they, you know, push ahead.
Yeah.
I basically agree.
Have we laid out a timeline? Do we have?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah. At the first meeting, the consultant gave us a suggested timeline that the board looked at and gave feedback. The only feedback that was provided to the consultant said, hey, we should maybe have meetings in December instead of, and so that's what the consultant took back. And that was from the board speaking their mind to the consultant.
That seems kind of off.
Which board was that?
That was the Charter Review Committee.
Charter Review, is it?
It's a board, not a committee?
Sorry, committee.
It's a committee.
I'm using the words interchangeable.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think they are interchangeable.
But I think they should lean as far forward as possible and start getting that public input and start hitting it hard because we're right around the corner. We're right around the corner from election year coming up in 2026. If we're going to make that timeline and have it on the ballot, there's a lot of work. It's got to be done, and it's got to come to us. So we have a lot of work to do. So.
If we don't better pace it out, I mean, that puts us under the gun. It puts legal counsel under the gun.
Yeah.
It's too important of a process to rush like that.
Understood. So, yeah, the consultant had it paced out so that it'd be ready to you by the requirement at the end of March. So it would be to you in time so that you would have your two meetings to review it. That's the necessary requirements by our charter. So that's what the schedule was done by.
So but even saying that, Mr. Duffy, that means that basically in two months, you're expecting a committee to make changes and agree on all of the changes to our city constitution. I don't think that's acceptable.
Okay. Yeah, and that's the council's direction. That's fine. That was based off of experience that she's done with other cities. So is that the council's direction? We can definitely amend that.
And just to add, I agree with everybody here. I think it's too important to wait and try to squeeze it all in later. Another thing with that is I think, you know, potentially, I don't want to speak for what her thought process is, and, you know, she's done this before, but I think we're going to have a lot of proposed changes that have to be workshopped and figure out what those are going to be. So it's going to take time to get those little down-to viable product, like Councilman Sullivan said, because it's got to be a usable product at the end for us and then the residents to make the decisions on when it comes to the referendum. So I agree with pushing it forward. They can work in parallel with the community outreach to get the feedback from the residents and still be meeting to kind of storm through that process of what changes may be something that everybody agrees on versus what maybe it's an outlier that not everybody agrees on.
Is that the direction you need, Ms. Cook, city manager?
Yes, this is very helpful because this is the only time where we can talk to you all about this. So thank you for the clarification, and we will move out on that. In regards to Senate Bill 180, Mr. Scully, the city council is actively monitoring that with Representative Greco and Senator Leake, and we believe there'll be some rulemaking, and this will come back in session either this fall or early next year regarding that concern. Ms. Duarte, the stormwater drainage on eastbound versus west side of town, there is a stormwater study that is done that we could provide you to help clear that up. And we do have a tour for wastewater treatment plant two and water treatment plant three available and open if you wanted to attend on December 10th, and any resident who's wanting to learn more about our utility system, and that might be able to clear up some of those concerns regarding brackish water, gray water, and any of that. And then as far as mixing funds, there are various funds and then restrictive uses per each fund. So utility is an enterprise fund, and all of those funds stay within the utility. General fund is only garnered for certain services for the city, and it's not mixed with the utility, and it's not mixed with stormwater. So there's other information that we can provide you on that as well. Ms. Carroll, thank you for the compliment of Mr. Sims. We'll make sure we provide that to the chief building official, Mr. Buckley, in regards to one of his staff members. We appreciate his efforts. And the city attorney process was a competitive bid process that city council chose. There were several different firms, and ultimately, the city council chose the Douglas Group.
That's the 24.
Yes, ma'am. And I think that's all that I can answer, mayor.
What would the cities that are suing over SB or the municipalities that are suing over SB 180, what will we have to do to contact those and find out if we could get in on that litigation? Do we have, or could we get consensus for, could we get consensus from the council to have Mr. Duffy research that and find out what we would have to do to get on board with the people that are fighting it legally?
So you're asking to be a party?
Well, I'm asking to find out. Get the specifics on what they're doing and what we would have to do if I can get consensus from the council.
Yeah, I would like to know exactly what they're suing for, just, I guess, more details. And it's my understanding that there's a cost associated with that, so obviously would, you know, want that information before we made any decisions.
Could you reach out to them? Could you do that research?
And I'm not sure if, is Florida legal cities doing anything legally, or are they just lobbying?
I believe it's just lobbying efforts, sir.
We know we're lobbying, and I spoke to Representative Greco about it. So, but let's see if we have to, what we would have to do to get in on it. So everyone agree?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. Anything else, city manager?
No, sir.
Well, I'm sorry. One more thing. On Paraty, at that corner lot, when will that situation be fixed? When does the resident have to have it fixed, or us go in and do it for them?
So stormwater staff inspected the residence residential culvert at 70 Paraty, and it's my understanding that there is a pipe inside of the culvert pipe, inside of the residential culvert pipe, that's concreted in, and therefore, that's a violation. And we originally issued a notice of violation with a 15-day corrective action, but since we have gone back and issued a courtesy violation of 365 days.
Is that, is that any way adding to the problem of the drainage on that street?
Yes, sir, because the concreted pipe that's in is smaller.
Aerial in the flow.
Yes, sir, and that's at the end of the run, end of the swell run.
Okay.
It's been $13,000 on the driveway.
All right. Let's follow up and make sure that that's taken care of at a minimum.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Yes, sir.
Just on the public comments, this is kind of near and dear to my heart. On the financial disclosure of elected officials, the state two years ago tried to pass a law that would say that not only the county-elected officials, but the city-elected officials would have to do what's called Form 6, and you can back me up on that mark when I finish. Form 6 is the one that I had to fill out when I was a commissioner on the county every year. The last one I did was in December of '24. For the city, there was an uproar about it. A lot of people just didn't want to do it all over the state, and so was retracted. And so the only financial disclosure that's done for the city level is a Form 1, which is not detailed. The one is, again, Form 1 is not detailed. That's what's required for the city council. Form 6 is the detailed financial disclosure that I think you're referring to, and that's for elected county.
County and above.
County and above, and some other, the constitutionals. But just, it's by law. It's a little bit like a lot of other things we do. It's required by law, and that's the way it's required. There was some push to have everybody do Form 6, but that did not end up happening.
Is that about? During that election year, I had to fill it out, and then I think in July, they nixed it and went back to the Form 1.
Yeah, I had noticed that, too.
To be honest, this is a subjective, but a lot of people were going to resign from the city councils around the state and all that.
Some of them should, if they're crooks.
If that's their concern about filling out a financial disclosure, then yeah.
Okay, we're going to. And one more, just, and the last one was on the impact fees, and we may have other discussions about the impact fees, but we went through a long process on that, and we did adjust for square footage, which gets at the point on lesser, smaller homes versus the big home. The way it was working before, if you bought a 5,000, a new 5,000-square-foot house, or you bought a new 1,800-square-foot house, you were paying the same impact fees. In the adjustments we made, that go into effect October 1st, I believe, we did try to adjust to make the impact a little bit less on the smaller homes.
All right, thank you, sir. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I have some comments.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead, Ms. Gumbaro.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Sullivan, for your comments on the financial disclosures, and you're spot on. The other thing I'd like to highlight as well is that, you know, four of us on the dais are veterans. Three of us are 100% disabled veterans, right? So Councilman Miller, the mayor, myself, we've earned through blood and sweat the privilege, the honor and privilege of serving our nation. And one of the great things about living in the great state of Florida is that they recognize that sacrifice. And yes, the three of us do not pay taxes on our primary residents. That's a fact. And so nothing to apologize there for. We've earned it, and it's a great benefit for those of us that have worn the uniform and continue to serve our community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. You have something else, Mr. Miller?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Just a couple of things. Also, on the impact fees, thank you, Councilman Sullivan, for bringing the square footage up. We also, you know, there was a lot that went into as far as, you know, how it would affect affordable housing. We went back and forth a lot on that. And if you look at surrounding communities' price per square foot, we're still much lower than surrounding cities. So we're still much more affordable. So I think that even with the rates and impact fees, we're where we should be, and if you look at how affordable our community is as far as housing goes, I know there's probably debates on some other things, but as far as housing goes, we are still much more affordable. The only other thing I wanted to do was to thank Advent Health for coming out. I want to thank everybody who spoke out for prostate cancer awareness and also for Recovery Month. I think there is a lot of courage that went into those who spoke from the podium today on both of those issues. I lost my uncle to prostate cancer a few years ago, and it was because it was undetected for a very long time. So for those who spoke, thank you for that, and thank you to the community for continuing to bring these very important issues to light.
Thank you, ma'am. Are we going to move on to item F minutes? We have the minutes from August 19th business meeting, and we have August 26 workshop. Can we get any corrections, alibis, anything on the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
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 So you got what you need, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to item G, appointments. Appointment of one voting member and one alternate member to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. City manager?
Mayor, may I just, I would just really quickly like to ask for consensus. So we are actually appointing on two different committees today, the Citizens Advisory and also the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory. But if you'll notice, the two gentlemen that we had apply for Bicycle and Pedestrian and also applied for Citizens Advisory. Because we have more candidates for the Citizens Advisory, is there any objection to switching those so that we vote on Citizens Advisory first and then?
I have no problem with it. Does anyone have any problems with that? Councilman Gumbaro, do you mind going with?
No issues.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
We'll go with that one first. City manager, these are all the people that have been put in their packets. Anthony, how do you pronounce it? Anthony Valley, is that correct? David Liebarger, Alex Saurus, and Mark Woods, and the same ones are on the alternate. And this is going to be, we're not providing them a chance to speak. We're just voting.
It's up to you, mayor, if you wanted to allow them the opportunity to speak if anybody was here.
Is anyone here? Is anyone here?
Couple, yeah.
There's a couple here?
Someone over here, too.
We got three.
Yeah, the four.
Do we have any problems with allowing them a three-minute window to introduce themselves?
I think they should be able to.
Okay, let's go. Queue up. Who wants to introduce themselves?
Good evening. I'm David Michael Liebarger, 58, Lydell Drive in Palm Coast, and I have served in a number of positions as a city councillor, as a president of the city council, as on committee, on the planning commission, on the water board, on numerous parks commission, traffic safety commission. In the different places I've lived, I've always felt it was important to serve your community and be a part of it, and so that's what I'm offering again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, Mark Woods, 72 Rivers Edge Lane. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have proudly called Flagler County home since 1996, arriving just after or as ITT was leaving the area. My first local role was at the Harbor Side Inn. Some of you may have been around long enough to remember the Harbor Side Inn, and I've been invested in this community ever since. Since arriving about 30 years ago, I've watched the region grow, evolve, and take on the complex challenges that come with expansion. I spent the years since my job at the Harbor Side Inn building businesses, raising my voice in community conversations, and staying deeply connected. voice in community conversations, and staying deeply connected to how the region functions. Some of you may know, may know me for being outspoken, but I always speak from a place of care, accountability, and belief in community-centered solutions. I value open dialogue and diverse perspectives, and I'm ready to contribute with both energy and humility. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Anthony Del Valle. I live in Section B, and I welcomed the opportunity to introduce myself. From my early age, when I enlisted into the United States Marine Corps, to the years I spent as a DOD police sergeant, service has always been a foundation of who I am. Three decades of service in the military and law enforcement, as a corporate manager and business owner. And to those to retire early and make our home here in the city of Palm Coast, we love this city, and that's why I'm here today. I want to serve, and I want to contribute in the future of Palm Coast. In my experience, I have worked and collaborated with teams, I have done policy analysis, and I have led with a strong mindset. My belief is in transparency, community-focused planning, and physical responsibility. I have a strong work ethic, I am loyal, and I am committed. The year is 2025. I don't know where the year went, but it's almost done. I have, me and my wife have an empty nest. Our family of seven are now grown and pursuing their dreams, as I am here today pursuing mine. I want to serve again, this time for the city of Palm Coast. I will end how I started. My name is Anthony Del Valle. I am honored to be here today. I appreciate your time, I thank you for listening, and I hope to get your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. So, we're going to vote, the first one, on the Citizen Advisory Committee. If you have your votes, we do both.
Primary and the alternate.
Primary and alternate, yes, sir. Fold it in half, and we'll give them to Ms. Cook. How's, how are we going to work this with? Mr. Gambero, oh, he can just announce them. Councilman Gambero, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Who's your primary vote for the Citizen Advisory Committee?
Mr. Del Valle.
That's your primary? Who's your secondary? Your alternate?
Mr. Liebarger.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got the wrong papers. Who was the second one?
Mr. Liebarger.
Okay, we got it. She's got what she need from that.
In the interest of filling the silence, I just wanted to thank everybody for applying. It's really important in terms of these committees. One of the main reasons that these are now open for appointment is because I receive a report from the TPO on attendance, and in recent months, it has not been attended by, you know, our appointees. So, just want to make sure that those applying understand the importance of showing up. They have the option for, you know, video or voice call as well for some of these committees. So, I feel like there's never really an excuse except for, you know, when you're, you know, an emergency situation or something like that to not attend or have the alternate attend for you.
We got it.
Yes, so the city council has three votes for Mr. Del Valle and three for the primary member, and then for the alternate member, there are three votes for Mr. Woods.
Okay, so we have, we have the alternate and the primary and the alternate. So, are you straight, Anthony? Mr. Woods, you good? Okay, we're going to move on to the second one, Bicycle Pedestrian Safety.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
The feed's been going in and out.
We got you, go right ahead.
Okay, so, Mr. Liebarger is primary, and Mr. Woods is, I'm sorry, Soros is second.
Can't be.
We're on the other committee now, sir. We're on the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee.
If his primary was Liebarger...
Okay, come back to me.
It's good. If you voted primary for Liebarger, the alternate would automatically be Anthony. So, you got what you need, Ms. Cook?
Yes, sir, again, this votes for Mr. Liebarger for the voting members.
Okay, so, Ms. Liebarger, where are you at? Congratulations, sir. Okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Semper Fi.
Oh, you had to bring that up.
We're well, we're well represented today.
Thank, thank you, everyone that...
Those Marines were actually right on a bicycle? They figured out how to do that?
Holy moly. Shots fired, shots fired. Thank you, everyone that applied, and I encourage all citizens, when there's an open position on the committees, if you want to get involved in your city and what goes on here, please apply and come in and present yourself and try to get on those committees to serve your community. Okay, we're moving on to item H, ordinance of the second read, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a 2025 ordinance of the second read amending the city of Palm Coast Unit 5's Land Development Code, Chapter 13 relating to exterior colors.
This is only three years in the making.
Mayor, City Council, there's been no changes since the first reading on August the 19th, and Ms. Stokes here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Can we get a motion? Motion to approve. We got a motion to approve?
Second.
We got a second by Councilman Gambero. Any further discussion? We'll open it up for public comment. Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. Any further comments? Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
No.
Councilmember Gambero?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to item I, resolutions, number seven. This item has been removed from the agenda. It is rescheduled for the 16th of September?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Anyone, there's no presentations. We're just going through to approve these, this consent agenda. Anyone have any questions? Any concerns?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda.
We got a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We got a second. Any further, any discussion from the council? We'll open it up to public comment. Any public comment concerning anything on the consent agenda?
In?
Ma'am?
Is there a final comment?
No, ma'am, we got one more coming. Seeing no one come forward for public comment, I'll bring it back to the dais. Any further comment on the consent agenda? Ms. Cook, call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambero?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're moving on to item K, final public participation. If you have not spoken on a subject or you wish to speak on something completely new, please come forward. Yes, sir, Mr. Anthony. Ladies first, maybe not. Come on, Anthony. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Tony Amaral, City of Palm Coast. Just real quick, I keep hearing these things come up. For the record, and you're welcome to check and verify it, St. John's County total impact fee is $28,800, plus or minus a few dollars. Volusia County's $21,000. Ormond Beach is sitting currently at $13,200, and we are currently sitting at $33,200 total dollars, so, for clarification.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Duarte.
I have a question about, I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but the resolutions 2025, the XX, we're unable to follow those. Can you explain why we're not getting? We don't know the numbers. We don't know how to find these, to research them, and apparently, until they're approved, they don't get a number. So, I'm trying to figure out how we can pre...
You can request a full packet of the agenda so you can see everything that's in there.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. If you hit me up, Ms. Duarte, I can send you a link. I think Ms. Chantel asks me every week for links, so... Yes, ma'am, Ms. Carroll.
Yes, I still have not seen the 2025 salaries on the city's website. We only have the 24 salaries. When will that be up? I've asked three different times. And where are we now with hiring our city manager? Have we progressed in that matter? And I backtracked when Alyssa Johnson in 2023 was acting city manager at a salary of $130,000. I think that salary now is $100,000 more. We got to start adjusting these salaries. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, Ms. Chantel.
Chantel Punniger, okay, the first public comment, there was somebody who came because his house was flooded, and it was due to the house next door that was on Ohio level. And I'm joining him in a request, not because my house is flooded at all, but because it has to be addressed. If the city authorizes some new buildings to be hired, I mean, there's no other way it's going to flood on the other houses. So, I hope the city really heard that gentleman and will act quickly. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, I'm very excited about the advisory committee for the bicycle and pedestrian, because when I ride my electric scooter, I don't know where to go. You told me I can go on the street, but if we have two lanes and I need to turn on the left, I don't know where to go, really. So, the roads are not meant for the bicycles, and the sidewalks are not made for the bicycles because they have so many angles. And so, I hope there's going to be a solution, and we'll be able to ride safely, and pedestrian will also be able to use their space. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, Ms. Scully.
No, there aren't any comments that I can probably say for some time. This is the...
Yes, yes, sir.
Information and the wrap-up solution with the...
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. City Manager, the City Manager, we're going to miss, for Ms. Carroll, we're trying to narrow down the City Manager search for, that'll be on the next meeting. We're going to try to narrow it down, we're going to try to narrow it down to 25 to begin with, and then down to eight or so?
Yes, 25 was our initial request, but if you'd like to go ahead and narrow it down to eight, we will take that direction as well.
My understanding on that was, we were supposed to submit our first breakdown, and then I thought that we were also saying for the next thing, for our next meeting, we would only look at...
People that got three votes.
People that got three votes.
Yes.
That's still...
Yes, sir.
What we're going to do. Okay, so, the next meeting, we'll have a list of only the candidates that got three votes.
Yes.
And then I guess individually, we could ask that that be changed, but that's the list we're going to get.
That's when the lobby on will start, is when we narrow it down. The salary, are the 25 salaries posted online yet?
No, sir, and we don't believe the 24 salaries are on there. And actually, we're taking information off the website currently, in all regards, because it's not ADA compliant. We have the deadline of April of next year, so if Ms. Carroll, we can submit a public records request, we can provide that to you.
Ms. Carroll, send me an email, and I'll send, I'll send you a spreadsheet that has all that on it. We haven't broken down everything.
Why can't the public say it?
Well, she just said we got to get it ADA compliant. We're trying to, trying to get the systems upgraded. But I can, but I can send you a spreadsheet that has all the salaries, benefits, all that stuff, okay?
It would be nice to know.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else, City Manager, on the?
I was not the City Manager in 2023.
No, I'm just saying, anything else from you? Any follow-ups? Any more follow-ups?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anything else concerning public comment?
Not public comment, no.
You got anything, Councilman Gambero?
No, round's complete, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to item L, discussion of city council matters, not on the agenda. Does anybody have any alibis? Anything, anything coming up?
I just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to bring up, I went to TPO last week, last Wednesday. Most of it was administrative because of the changeover from the previous fiscal year to the new fiscal year, so moving certain funds forward to the next year. But one thing of note was the recent state law that basically outlawed anything that's not DOT-approved traffic markings on roadways. And so, for our community specifically, I think the only thing that I know of right now is the bike program that was at Bel Air and Indian Trails where there was some murals done, I think, on the sidewalks that have to be removed. So, I think DOT sent us all an email that was in regards to this, so I think they're going to print off, like, some canvas prints of those, maybe to be displayed in the school. But unfortunately, you know, that law basically eliminates the ability to have artwork on roadways and sidewalks and things of that nature, so, and it's affecting other communities as well. I think the, you know, like, the checkered flag in Daytona and things like that are now based on that law, not allowed. So, that's affecting us. And then, city-county joint meeting, we discussed a couple of things, but the, the main thing was, they asked that we bring back the potential for them running a referendum on the beach, the half-cent sales tax, and just wanted to bring that up for discussion as well amongst the board.
And I think the majority of the board said that they were in favor of it going on.
At the time, the last time we discussed it, I just said, we'll talk about it again so we know what everybody currently, and I don't know if, I can't remember if Councilman Sullivan was, was here during the time, yeah.
What's your opinion on that?
Well, my opinion was that it was the county's responsibility, and they could have, with a supermajority, have voted in the half-cent sales tax. And that was kind of where I was coming from, because I could see this coming when I was the board over there. But they chose not to do that, and the referendum seems to be what they're willing to do. And yes, we, I would support that.
It's a hard road to hoe. Anybody else have any comments on that?
The only comment that I'll make is, obviously, I prefer a referendum for this type of decision rather than it being voted on by the board. But I would also like to see more data and information provided to the residents prior to a vote like this, if it does meet a referendum, if it does make it on a referendum. So, the only thing I would ask for from county staff, and maybe working in conjunction with our staff, is, you know, I think it's incumbent upon the county to provide the residents with information as to where current monies that are for the beach come from. What reaches do they come from? What reaches cost, how much money? So that the residents understand exactly what is paying for certain mechanisms for beach construction and reneurization now. I don't think it's fair to ask for residents to vote on something of this magnitude without having all of the transparent financial information in front of them. And to date, I think that that information has been fluid at best. It's been very unclear, in my opinion, and I, from listening to the BOCC meetings, I think that a lot of folks on the county board would agree. The information has, the goalpost has been moved, we'll say, quite a few times. And so, I think if we're going to ask the residents to make a decision like this, that it's incumbent upon us to provide them with... it's incumbent upon us to provide them with accurate and thorough information so that they understand exactly what they're voting on.
A hundred percent, I agree. I mean, obviously, you can only make good choices with good information in front of you, so I support that as well.
So we have no problem with it going on a referendum. Any, anything else from city council members? You got anything else, Mr. Miller?
Oh, you know, I got to give my sports update.
Hold on, da-da-da, da-da-da.
Yeah, that's right.
Go Gators.
Go Gators. I had the opportunity to go to the opener at University of Florida to watch the Gators win. It was a great time to, took the kids, first time both kids got to go to a big game like that, so was fun getting them out there, seeing the cheerleaders and all that stuff, and, you know, the band. So had a great time, and Mr. Mayor, I'll give you the opportunity to, to update on, on your Seminoles as well, because I'm sure you got something to talk about.
That was a big win.
Big win. You got anything?
Um, just to that, end of an era with Lee Corso leaving us, that was a big deal, too.
Yeah, I guess he went 7-0 on his predictions, this, this final game day prediction, so that's pretty cool.
I'm just saying, he was always a UCF fan, so throw it not that away. He was. Okay, so-
He coached the Nols.
Couple things. I want to thank Martin with Stormwater, I think he's a swale supervisor, is that correct? City manager?
I think he's a lead.
Okay, so we had obviously some really bad storms over the past week, and I was communicating with staff very early in the morning about a couple residents who had some issues. Martin and his team were out at properties in full force, really working diligently to help some of those flooded properties. So really want to shout out to him and all of our Stormwater team for the work that they did, just really, I mean, they were on top of it just really quickly, and I, I think there were multiple properties, if, if we, if we were contacted about those issues that they went out to. So thank you to Martin and the team for that. The other thing I was reading, so we all get Evolve magazine in our boxes every month. I had the opportunity to read it a few days ago, and there was a, there was a, a lot of good articles in there actually about economic development and strategies as far as kind of long-term planning for how to create economic development in your community. And I know that we're all very focused up here on that. We've made that clear from our strategic action plan and what we've budgeted monies for in our economic development department this year, and I, I don't see, is Craig out of town? Is he here? He's just not here?
He's not here.
Okay. So one of the things that the article talked about was development of your workforce and how important it is for you to really start, this is really a long-term thing, right? So this is looking very long down the road. How do you start developing your workforce from an education, training, bringing in certain employers that are willing to invest also in education and training? So what I would like to see, and I'm just asking for consensus from council to maybe put it in staff's lap, to come up with maybe a workforce coalition, where essentially we get together, the school district, our economic development representative, obviously, Craig, Daytona State College, the newly deformed IDA, the Industrial Development Authority, and also JP with the chamber, and just see if maybe, you know, we can have a roundtable of folks who really are focused on workforce development. Because if you look at successful communities around us, what they've been able to do is create a workforce, and that's not, that doesn't mean just bringing in more people. That's not what that means, even though we hear that a lot from certain communities. It's not just piling in more people. It's training the people that we have here to be successful in the types of industries that we know will succeed here. So, and, and also to attract those types of industries here as well. So I would ask for consensus from this council to maybe give staff the ability to look at creating such a coalition with a lot of our stakeholders that we already work with on a pretty regular basis.
Yeah, you have, you have mine.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Just to add to it, I think that especially the schools, that, schools right now are facing a huge challenge because you have choice, right? And they are having to create programs that make them stand out versus other options that are out there, whether it's homeschool, or private school, or whatever the case may be. But for them, I think there's an opportunity to have specific tracks that can feed into this economic development, you know, so I think that's a great idea, to have them involved as well as Daytona State and, and some of the other business leaders within the community.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
When we did that, that, right after the election, when we did that get-together, that was a lot of those stakeholders were in that meeting, right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. We did host a workforce table, roundtable, where the mayor spoke and gave the introduction, and we did have the school district there, there, the education foundation, several of our largest employers, and some healthcare initiatives, so we can look to host that again.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Sullivan, you got anything?
I just, I just wanted to just note, item M10, discussion notice regarding impact fee ordinances. I think the lawsuit by the Business Builders Association has been, it's not just going to be, it, it's officially on the record.
Yes, I will be bringing that up during my-
So that, there's limited amount of what we can talk about concerning that at this point.
I'll, I'll bring that up during my attorney comments, Ms. Sullivan.
So, so what I would like, the only thing to say about that, and stop me if I say anything wrong, but we went through a long process on changing the impact fees. A lot of that has to do with, with reality of the situation that we were way behind on development and what was available, and this is our, our best attempt to, to provide for the future, and we were very careful to make sure we were dotting all the i's and doing everything in a legal manner. With that said, the Business, the Builders Association had plenty of time to talk at our meetings. It was kind of a limited input that they made while I was here. They, they actually said that they were okay with increasing the impact fees. The question was how much? The staff provided us with what they thought was the best changes to the impact fees. We discussed that a lot, and we actually came back off what the, what the staff had, had recommended. So I, I just put that out there that there's always a, a legal course of action that can be taken, like it's been taken. But as far as the government side goes on the impact fees, we are the last government group. There's no government group above us on the impact fees. We're, we're the, we're the final deciding factor on that. So the Builders Association can take their shot, and we'll see what happens.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gambaro, do you have anything?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, nothing from me. We'll move on to the attorney. This way you get into that, Marcus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, as city council, as you're aware, we received a letter last week from the Flagler Palm Coast County Home Builders Association, giving us a pre-suit letter contesting the 2025 impact fees that you guys passed in this year. So I'm here just to tell you, this is going to be, it can be a discussion if you want, but myself and staff will be analyzing that letter and be meeting, and we hopefully will have an update for you sometime this week or next week, kind of give your advice on where to go with that. But I just wanted to make sure you guys were tracking that letter, and we'll be analyzing on what position we stand on that.
Okay, and if you have to call a shade meeting, you'll call a shade meeting.
Yeah, so I, yeah, if I have to call a shade meeting, I, I will call that, but I do not see calling that right now.
I, I have a question. Is it possible, or do you foresee the need to request more time? Because I know we're on a tight time schedule to respond to that, but it's quite a lengthy letter, and presumably, because this has to be discussed in the sunshine, unless legally we can call a shade meeting, we would have to make a decision at what is already a very lengthy meeting next week, and we wouldn't really have time to kind of give direction to staff to then come back to us prior to having to respond to that.
We, we're analyzing that at this time. I don't have a recommendation to ask for continuance, but that is something that we can always look at if it comes to that point.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is that all you had, Marcus?
Yes, sir.
Matters not on the agenda, city manager?
Uh, yes, Mayor. The legislative delegation meeting is scheduled for September 19th at the Government Services Building. How did you want to handle that presentation this year? I will not be available, I'll be out of town. We can, last year, we prepared a presentation that outlined our top priorities and kind of explained that we are allowed three minutes, so.
You and, you and I can sit down, and I'll present.
You'll present? Okay, sure. I'll set that up for you, Mayor. Then Mr. Gambaro asked that we, that you all meet out and see the lights at Ralph Carter Park. We're trying to schedule that after one of your meetings next week, whether it's the workshop or the budget hearing, just so that you don't have four nights that you're out, because Thursday is the 9/11 ceremony at Heroes Park. And then finally, Fire Station 22 topping out ceremony is tomorrow at 9:00 AM. And that's all I had, Mayor.
Either night works for me for Ralph Carter Park.
You got Fire Station, Fire Station 22 in the morning at 0900?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, sorry, to be clear, though, I got some emails saying if you want to take the shuttle from the community center to be there by 8:00, right?
Yes, but then you're standing there for an hour, so if you got there closer to 8:30, that should be fine.
Got to the community center?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
And dress accordingly, because it's a little wet, is what I've been told.
Wear your work boots.
Yes.
Jungle boots.
Okay, everything else on the calendar is, is my stuff. Anything else? Any alibis? Nothing? Motion?
Motion to adjourn.